I'll call the meeting to order. Our first meeting tonight, as we have two, is the public hearing for the Dodge City Community College Board of Trustees in regards to our annual published budget. I'd first like to recognize our visitors, Shelton Birch from the Dodge City Daily Globe, Dawn Flower from Johnson Controls, and Vincent Marshall from Dodge City Daily Globe as well. And so, when we open our regular monthly meeting after this, we'll go through our usual process there, but for the hearing, our agenda states that we'll initially start off with statements of the Chair and members of the Board. Trustee Reichenborn, would you like to start? Any statements, sir?
I don't have a statement for today.
Trustee Ramsar?
What kind of statement do you want?
Well, in regards to the published budget, if you have any, otherwise...
Now, I'll wait for the next one.
Okay, very good. Trustee Malone?
No.
Okay. And Trustee Hampton?
I will say thank you to the administration for the work they've done to bring us into line, as we knew we had to, and I appreciate that, and it isn't easy. So, not only thank you, but it's a boost for our future, so appreciate that.
And I concur, the thanks and the diligent work that's gone into this, and the review that we had at our last meeting, and the continued information provided to us and kept up to date, and we look forward to going forward with this. Next, I will ask for the statement of Dr. Nolte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we discussed in our workshop on the 28th about the budget, and your assessed evaluation, which is a good thing, was up 5%, and that's why I'm getting ready to read to you about the published budget, and I'm going to read the KSA 792925B. "Any municipality shall approve any budget which may be funded by revenues produced from property taxes and which provides the funding with such revenues in an amount exceeding that of the next preceding year. Adjusted to the reflected changes in the consumer price index, the community municipality approves the proposed increase with a majority vote of governing board by the adoption of the resolution." Would you like to add that? There you go. So pursuant of the KS 792925B, so there you go.
Very good.
And it's because our values are up, and that's great. That's good news for the community.
It is, very good news. So with that and all of our statements, I'd welcome any public comments, as this is a public hearing for that Board, so if there is any public comments, I'd please come to the mic up here and state your name and address for the record, and we'd be glad to hear. Go on, let everybody get up at once. Okay. Well, seeing none then, Dr. Nolte, if you would like to present the resolution, and then we can have discussion.
Just did present the resolution.
Okay, very good.
So that is it, and just for everyone to know, you know, this is not the operating budget. Our operating budget, what we're working on, I want you to know, in the last couple of weeks, we, along with Sandy and Christie and others in our department heads, we have been diligently working on cutting the budget. So I just want you to know that we've been working on that for the last two weeks. We are round cuts-wise, we've cut so far around $700,000. We're going to do more than that, and just let you know what we're doing. And we're cutting things that I don't, it's not going to hurt the faculty, and these are things that we can cut, like some of the travel and some of those things that are on those that we feel like they're able to. But knowing that, we need to make sure that our staff and our faculty and administration knows that we have to be very accountable to our budgets from now on, and make sure that our budgets are well looked at and we are stewards of our budget. Hope that helps. Working hard on this one, though. This is going to be a tough year, but we'll get through it.
Well, I think we need to hold folks accountable for credit card use, you know, that seems to sometimes go awry.
Very good. So I'd entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we approve the budget for this for year 1920.
Resolution 2018-06.
Oh, yes, I did.
Second.
Second. Thank you for that. Any further discussion on the budget 2018-06 for the year 2018 to 19? Hearing none, then I would, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. And the budget approval passes, and our public hearing is completed. So we've moved to adjourn the public hearing, and then we'll move on into our regular monthly meeting, which I will then again call to order a few minutes later.
When I grow up, I want to save lives, like a superhero, and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people, too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College: Adventure awaits.
At the beginning of all our regular monthly meetings, the Dodge City Community College mission statement's read, and I'll read that for everyone now. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. As per our routine as well, I'd welcome any public comments or remarks that would need to be made from the audience. If anybody has any, please come to the mic, and again, state your name and address if you have any of those. We'd be glad to hear from you. Hearing no public comments, we have some comments from our other Board members who are trying to call in to us, I guess. Hello?
Is it this we're both on, speaking to one another?
That's really saying right, so...
Online, but no one is there.
Can we have them call in?
Yes. We appreciate everybody's patience, we'll... Actually, why don't we proceed with our Pledge of Allegiance, please, for everybody's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As Dr. Nolte tries to get our other trustees on the phone, we'll go ahead and proceed through some of the initial steps of our meeting. I first, if everybody has a chance to approve or review the previous minutes from our special Board meeting July 23rd and the regular Board meeting on July 24th. If there's any discussion, otherwise a motion to approve those.
I would move to still move, I would move to approve the minutes of those two meetings. July 23rd and what was it, July 20?
24th.
24th.
There's a lot of them right there together.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Second.
And second by Trustee Ramsar. Thank you. And if no further discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed. And then the approval of our agenda tonight, Carla, if you would... Well, I can read them now off here. So there are some amendments and adjustments to our agenda tonight to complete. The addition of Action Item B, administrative appointment, and Action Item C, grant of easement, removed from the agenda tonight as executive session, and revisions to the consent agenda additions, personnel item number seven, number eight, number nine, number 10, and number 11. These are for head spirit coach, student support services academic advisor, assistant spirit coach resignation, instructor welding appointment, and temporary assistant professor of chemistry appointment. Those are all the listed additions, changes, and otherwise, unless anybody has anything else to add. And if not, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to ask some questions about items, they're all the same item, really, under business services, six, seven, eight, nine. I just have one question about those.
Okay.
It's the firearm specialist.
Okay, very good. So we'll close out for discussion, Dan, if that's okay? Any other changes?
I move that we accept the agenda. If there's no... Mr. Reichenborn?
Thank you, Trustee Ramsar.
Second.
Second from Trustee Malone. Thank you. All approved of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Reports to the Board of Trustees. Linda Armaderas, the SGA President, Linda, if you'd like to come up and talk with us, we always would be glad to hear from you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It's all very good to see you all. Thank you for coming. This week, we're all very excited because we start next week. So far, we're planning to start off the first two weeks with a couple of events, just to start getting the students more involved and comfortable with the staff and students in the college. I know Monday, we're going to do a little kickball tournament, and also movie night, so if you guys want to stop by. Also, we were part of the parade, you know, it was really fun to see us there, it was great, a lot of people were, we had a lot of good comments about it. And we were also at the Arts and Crafts Show at Themo, which was really cute, too. Got a lot of people stopping by to ask, you know, about our college, and we have some great comments, too. There's very, not much of a report this month, because we're just getting ready for the school to start, and we got some events coming up also, but we can't wait to start sharing all of them with you guys. So thank you for your time, and we can't wait to start once again this school year, so...
Thank you, Linda, we really appreciate you being back, and we look forward to next month, I'm sure you'll have lots to tell us about.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to trustees' reports, and just to mix it up, Trustee Malone, we'll let you start this time.
I don't have any.
Very good. Trustee Hampton?
Yes, I want to say that the dinner that we, some of us from Dodge City Community College hosted last week for the rodeo sponsors is really a unique way to meet people in the neighborhood and from outside of Dodge City that we don't see regularly, and I appreciated that opportunity, and thank you, Andrea, for setting that up. I think it's a good thing for us to do, and it's a setting that we expect to continue, so we will, I hope, be a part of that from now on. And I want to add, too, thank you to the students. Again, I'm continually pleased and excited about the caliber of our students, and I just want the public to know that we have a wonderful student body, so we need to support them any way we can. Thanks.
Trustee Reichenborn?
I'd just like to tell you that I stepped off the elevator tonight and heard the kids in the cafeteria laughing and enjoying themselves. It's good to see students back on campus and hearing them back on campus. I met a young woman the other day that's working at Walmart now, and she is transferring from Goodland, and she told me, I said, "Well, why did you start there and then come here?" And she said, "I'm coming to Dodge City because I think the program is better here." And so she's transferring here to finish up her second year here, so very encouraging to hear of students like that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, I, after reading the reports, Dean Osmus' report, and looking at the increase of the academics and the results of the outcomes that you are seeing in students and in your programs is amazing. Lots, very, very strong results with our students and increased improvement in lots of areas. I went to the parade, walked in the parade, and I've never had so much fun with 100 students walking for Dodge City College. I think I walked all but the last four blocks. And it's amazing their interaction with our public and the community, and those little kids look at them like they're royalty, and they touched them, and they gave them bracelets and things like that, so to the students at Dodge City Community College, thumbs up because they did a phenomenal job in the parade. And I also have a person out in the community that said, "Why don't we get our alumni association going and everything?" So we do have an alumni association, and we do have activities and things for people to come and get involved with, and...
Hello? Hello?
Hi, Maya.
Can you hear Maya?
Um...
So for Barry, come and find me, and we will get things moving. Just thank you. Good job. Foundation's working, yes.
Can you hear us?
I don't think she's hearing us.
Can you...
Hello?
Can you hear?
I don't think you can hear at all. Certainly not.
Okay, one last thing.
Yes.
Sally Cobble, who is our representative for the State Board of Education, complimented our college for finally moving ahead with technology so that they could get the results and the data that they have been missing, and she said it was like a big yahoo when we went on board with all of it. So she said the college is moving ahead into peak notices. And that's a bit... Oh, that's huge. Thank you.
Trustee Hartsberger?
Hi, does he hear? Can you hear him?
What did we say, we're moving ahead on techno...
The students are.
Can you hear better now?
I certainly can.
I had to take my cover off.
We'll just leave that, Maya.
I hope this is all on film, so that, or on video, so that I can watch each dumb cops operation on color.
It is.
You think for a bunch of people holding iPhones, we know how to use them.
Oh, isn't it... Yeah, Gary and I were discussing the point that technology, that's why, that's not allowing us to do what we wish.
Correct. Well, Maya, word to you, actually, on our trustees' reports, do you have a report, and I would, if they can't, if the Board can't hear it, I'll repeat what you have to share with us.
Okay, I would tell you that I'm in Washington DC, and I'm at the ACCT, new trustee training, and it has been exciting. It started yesterday morning at 7:30, and it is still going on, and we have another day tomorrow, and I'm excited to bring back all kinds of ideas and also best practices to the Board. There are many things that we might implement that are among best practices that I think would be beneficial to our Board in Dodge City. That's my report.
Thank you, Maya. I'm going to repeat that for those who might not have heard. Maya's at the ACCT new member, new Board member training in Washington DC, and to summarize, she is learning everything she needs to know, and is going to come back and fix all of her problems. Did I get that right? Okay.
Okay.
So, oh, and here's, well, maybe, hold on, Maya.
Take your cover off.
No, no, he's just not answering. Oh, no.
Hi, does he hear?
Still no luck. Okay. As we're continuing to try to get Chairman Hartsberger on the phone, I don't have a lot of other new things to report, since obviously we just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, so not a whole lot's changed. I'm, as always, looking forward to the students getting back on campus and the year getting going, because that always makes things feel like we're really... It's the easy reminder, as Trustee Reichenborn alluded, when we step off that elevator and come up the staircase, we hear the voices, and we know that now that we're back, so... Trustee Hartsberger?
You there?
Yes, sir, we're just anxiously awaiting your trustees' report. Do you have anything to share, sir, you're on speaker?
Just the frustration of technology trying to sell in the conference, number didn't work or something, so I guess I was going to have to go through your phone, is that accurate?
Yes, we have Maya on, Dr. Nolte's, and you're on Maya.
Okay, I'm good, all right, I'm good, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Malone does not have anything to report, or Trustee Hartsberger, I'm sorry. Does not have anything. Trustee Malone didn't either, here. Okay, moving on to some people who have their things in front of us to report. Vice President Tamak, can you, would you like to give us a note?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to continue with the theme of having the students back on campus. I know we've already had a couple of comments there. So this is our most exciting week that's coming up, starting this weekend and through next week, the beginning of kickoff of our semester. Just so you know, we actually have, as of 4 o'clock today, 148 students that are back on campus that have checked into the halls, so that's some of the noise that you hear when you get off the elevator. The residence halls will open on Sunday, August 12th, at 9:00 a.m., and you do have a brochure that's been placed at each of your desks, and this was what was sent out to our students, so I thought you might all like to see that, and if you get stopped in the grocery store and ask when opening day is, or when people can check in, or whatever, you'll have all that information in the brochure. We get asked about this information quite a bit. We actually opened our registration beginning of the month, so our student affairs staff have been busy getting people finalized with their enrollment. We actually will check some students in on Saturday, August the 11th, because they have to arrive early due to plane tickets, or their parents need to turn around and drive all the way back out of state and get home by Monday, so we try to accommodate that. But most of our students will check in beginning at 9:00 a.m. on Sunday. The student affairs offices will also be open on Sunday at 9:00 a.m. and set up for registration, and then also the business office comes over and sets up in the concorrel so that students have kind of a one-stop area to complete their registration. We will have extended hours on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the 13th through the 15th, so we stay open until 6:00 p.m. so that hopefully people that might be getting off work want to come in and finish their registration. As I said, our early arrivals in the residence hall include men's soccer, women's soccer, volleyball, athletic trainers, football, and resident assistants, and the resident assistants are already here, and they've been doing some training. We're focusing on mental health issues this year, and, you know, based on some serious, serious concerns that we had last year, and then also the research that we've been doing related to retention of college students. We know that short-term and even long-term mental health issues are what sometimes, are sometimes a barrier for students succeeding and completing college, so we've made a reorganization in student affairs, and we have an emphasis on counseling and prevention, and we're going to continue to do that, number one, because it's the right thing to do, and number two, it tells us that it's what's best for our students and retention and success in college. Safety and security continues to be a priority. You all have read President Nolte's goals, and his number-one goal is a safe and secure campus. So we've spent quite a bit of time, and we thank you for approving in last year's budget the purchase of some new security camera equipment, and I want to say all that has been upgraded with new lenses, some of the older ones, we have the new ones installed, all of our licensure and software are updated and current. And I want to give a huge thanks to one of our employees by the name of Skylar Callahan. Some of you may know Skylar Callahan, and Skylar made a lot of extra effort to get all this completed this summer and before the semester starts. We, thanks to Mike Webster's efforts and those of others in IT, we now have semester real-time enrollment reports for the first time that are available three times a day, so we can actually calculate how many people we've enrolled over several times. We get them at 8:00 a.m., at noon, and at 4:00 p.m. So this one is what we've got at 4:00 p.m. today. You can see, it shows your head count and your credit hours, and then it compares with the previous year. Right now, we're at 15,739 credit hours, and when we finished last fall, we were at 19,301. So we're on track to at least break even, or maybe be a little bit up, which I am excited about, because the national trend, we're bucking that because it's to be down a little bit at community colleges. We're not happy with that, though, we're not satisfied with that, we're going to go in all-out effort to try to increase it by the time we get to our certification count on the 20th day. Right now, just to make up to be even, we need 3,976 credit hours. They are so busy all this week. I think we're enrolling people earlier, and as you can see, if you go down there even at 4:45 in the day, we're enrolling people, and after 5:00. So it's going to be an exciting start to the year, and we will have some other information out about opening activities and things that students are going to be involved in, and certainly we always want to extend a welcome to all of the trustees if you want to attend any of the events. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I have a question. On the counseling and therapy, what do we actually provide, I guess, if we see a student that's, you know, been charged, or is in court, or is having troubles in the dorms, or whatever? I mean, what do we do for them?
Okay, what we do is, we have primarily what I call an educational-based counseling service. We do not provide long-term therapy. So for example, if we have a student who, a lot of them we'll see are homesick first few weeks of school, and so we talk to them about coping skills and being good people and kind of get them through that rough patch. Or we might have a young man or a young lady who's been in a long-term relationship, and then that is severed once they arrive at college. That's pretty typical of college freshmen. So we talk to them, get them through that. If we see something that is of an immediate alarm, that we think they might need an assessment for a more serious mental health issue, then we immediately refer them either to Compass or to other recognized agencies for an assessment, and then we follow through and work with those counselors and those agency settings to make sure that we're following their after-care plan and their continuing. They are very busy. I'm excited to, later on in the semester, bring and introduce to you Gaila Rodenbur, who you've approved as a counselor, and also Benny Wiley-Bethia, and she's been with us as part-time, and so we're blessed to have both of these persons available, and they're already helping students. They had an immediate alarm, serious issue this morning, that they started working on right away. So I think that you'll see assistance related to our retention, and certainly the success of our students there. Been badly needed.
Do we address specifically any alcohol or drug problems?
Yes, we do. A lot of times, depending on if the student receives what we call points in our residence hall system, they are referred for an alcohol assessment if it's more than one time. We also have an online assessment. It's not really an assessment, it's an education online that a student goes through and takes, and has some alcohol education. Certainly, alcohol and other drug information is always going to be very important for the student population, so yes, there is follow-up on that.
Thank you.
And they do that quite often.
Thank you, Ruth.
We also, is Christie here? We also put in the budget because I think there's a special need, we put in there for... Go ahead and tell them about that, Christie, about the, what we're doing for employees and staff.
For which area?
For drugs and alcohol, or for drugs, or...
Well, we do...
Christie, could you come up?
Yeah, can you come up here?
Of course.
Thank you.
Go ahead and tell them about that, Christie, about what we're doing for employees and staff.
For which area?
For drugs and alcohol, or drugs, or yeah.
Well, we do-
Christie, could you come up?
Can you come up here?
Of course.
Thank you, Zoe.
Well, you're all probably aware of our drug testing policy that we already have in our board policy. And so with that, there are certain, you know, if at any time someone is believed to be using, distributing, or possessing drugs or alcohol while at work, or things like that, then we can have, we can request a sample. We also, it's in our HR policies and procedures that we drug test all new employees. So that's full-time, part-time adjunct, full-time instructors. And then also, we have agreed to continue using Castle Branch, which does background checks as well on all of our new full-time and part-time employees. So as you, well, as you all know, we've been using that. And so it's been extremely helpful. Does that cover it?
Very good. You know, prevention is very important. As an ex-counselor, that's very important. But we also, we want to make sure we help people, too. I mean, that's what our goal is, is not only help the students, but we want to help faculty, staff, and administration if there's a problem. And so we're not using this as some kind of get at somebody. We're trying to do more of helping families. And you know, we just had an issue yesterday with a young man. It was, we thought was coming to school here. He's deceased. So we're working on all those kind of issues. And so it's very, very important, as an ex-counselor, and I know there's counselors in the room, we want to make sure that our students are safe and healthy and doing well. And we want to make sure that they feel good about where they are. Because that's very, very important to this college and to us. Thank you, Christie.
Yeah.
Did y'all hear that?
I think so. Threw us.
Yes, Sheriff, I heard that.
Maya?
I said alcohol.
Okay. Thank you.
When I grow up, I want to save lives, like a superhero, and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer. And I want to protect people, too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College: Adventure awaits.
Dr. Nolte, we skipped over you. And so before we go on to Sandy's report, if you would like to get the president's report, we'd be glad to hear from you, sir. Sorry, I was not trying to bypass you in this situation. The technical difficulties really threw me off.
Yeah, threw me off, too. We'll have this worked out next, I promise, next meeting. President's reception is, Andrea helped put this together, it's going to be Friday, as you'll see on the little postcard, and y'all are all invited. August the 17th, from 4:00 to 6:00, at Gaiman Pretro. I'm excited about that, and I think it'll be fun to meet new faculty and new staff, and have a place to go and visit with the new people, in somewhere different than the college.
Please make sure Dr. Jane, I think is the one that started the idea, so I wanted to give her the credit.
Thank you, Dr. Jane. Go ahead.
Thank you. We're excited that you're going to make this new tradition for us, and I really appreciate Andrea doing the light work with it. It's easy to have an idea, it's harder to make it happen, so thank you.
Very good, very good. It's fun, you know, we, as a president, we've done, you know, hand cookies out, ice cream out, and all sorts of things, so this will be, this will be fun also to be able to do. And it's fun, and I enjoy that. Also, I just wanted to make you aware that August the 12th, at 3:00 to 6:00, the Bond Project is open house. And so the USD is having their bond project. Ryan, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, well, I, unfortunately, not in detail. Yeah, you did.
You want to read this?
Yeah, read, yeah. So I do know that they'll be doing a, by and large, a tour of the updates and all of the different things that are taking place within the district. So that was a very large bond that was passed upwards of 85 million. So thank the taxpayers. And through that, though, 443's been able to make a variety of different updates to classroom space, cafeteria. I mean, there's been a wide variety of different things that we've been able to improve upon due to that passage of that bond, excuse me. So yeah, for those that are interested, please-
What is the date, Dr. Nolte?
August 12th, 3 to 6, Bond Project, open house.
That's exciting.
Yeah, and that is on a Sunday. And we'll be touring all the facilities, Beeson, Northwest, Central, everywhere where there was an update. So please come out, take a look. You should be proud of what's going on with that 443 and what was done through that Bond Project. Thank you, Dr. Nolte.
You're very welcome. The only, the last thing I have to say is, I'm glad to see here our numbers are up. I know some schools that are down. I know one school beside of us is down by 16%. That's not good, but hopefully, we will be getting their students in. Maybe you can comment that. No, but anyway, it's, we keep growing, and you know, it's our recruiting. Faculty, staff, and everyone are out recruiting and getting students here, and we're excited about that. It's always fun. This is a fun time of year. You know, I enjoy, because our goal here is to recruit, retain, educate, and graduate. And so this is one of the fun times of the year, and then also, graduation to me is really fun, seeing them walk across the stage. So those are, that's what we're all about, anyway. And so that's great. Got great faculty, brought some new great faculty in, and I'm excited about some of the faculty we brought, and so it's good.
Some of them are already here, getting ready for classes. That's very exciting.
Yes?
This is Maya. I wanted to say that I learned yesterday and today that, like, the trend is for fewer enrollees that community colleges make life. And so that makes me doubly proud of the successes that we are experiencing at Dodge City Community College.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Did people hear? Can you repeat what you said?
What Maya said is, she's at, at the conference of the new trustees, and a lot of schools are down in their enrollment. And so we're excited about getting our enrollment up. And I think good programs, I'm not supposed to say this, and Ryan's going to probably get mad at me for saying this, but like, for example, in our nursing program- I can't, I gotta say that? No, please. In our nursing program, it's, we, now, we only had 12 nurses take it out. Is it 17 or 18?
Yeah, we've had, so what I told Dr. Nolte is, I said, "Well, I'm going to tell you this, but don't tell anybody else," but nonetheless. So it's good news. It's good news. The only reason we were waiting on any kind of a formal statement was just to see how the other students finished up. But as of right now, we've got, so our NCLEX pass rate previous year was 96%. So now, the students that have just graduated are into their NCLEX. And right now, out of the 19 students we had, 14 or 15 have taken it already, and they have all passed. So right now, we're at 100%. But we've still got, you know, four or five to go. So some great news, nonetheless.
I had it chillin', though.
Yeah, I know. I know, it's good. It's good.
But let's brag again that we have been rated number-one nursing school in the state.
Yeah, through our, yes, absolutely. So yeah, as we've talked now several times, the community and our college and our community should be very proud of what's taking place within our new nursing program. They're doing some great, great work, and that's being reflected through, right now, 100% pass rate on the NCLEX. So it's exciting right now.
And congratulations to the nursing staff.
Absolutely. Congratulations to all of them.
You bet. And the last thing I want to say is, I love the rodeo. That's great. I think I love the parade more, though. You know, it's amazing to get out there and walk the parade, and a lot of us do it.
Yeah.
And it's fun to get to meet people and see people, and it's always good to see people in great spirits. And there's some great people here in Dodge City community. So it's great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. And again, my apologies for bypassing you. No offense. Now, Sandy, I prolonged this long enough. So would you like to present the report, or ask Mr. Flower to report on the Johnson Controls report?
Sandy, you don't have a mic.
That's okay, I can talk loud. For the new board members, the Johnson Control Project is, a couple years back, we upgraded our chillers, boilers, and lighting. So they visit us annually, or semiannually?
Yeah, I'm involved.
Yeah, to kind of bring the cost analysis to show the benefits of the project, so.
My good mind, yeah. Is there a screen that comes down, or?
Oh, more technology. Maybe the reception will be there.
Remote?
I don't have a remote.
Yeah, remember, we're improving our technology.
So I could start. I mean, I can kind of start introducing myself and mentioning the project. First couple slides end up kind of boring, anyway.
Get close to the microphone, Dave.
Yeah, speak up louder.
Sure. Is this, yeah, there we go. Okay, so I'm not sure, is that going to automatically kick on, or?
We sure hope so.
Yeah.
Maybe it's, let's try here.
I'm the, it wouldn't be the S video, I'm that, whatever they call that, a PIN input.
Down there, I'm setting my enter. You got two cables here with the-
That's good. I can try that other one.
Not fashion anything, so.
That's you?
Yeah. No, let's see. I went to the University of Nebraska. I live in Kansas City now. Let's see here. I don't know why that is showing up and not the, let's see.
Is Nebraska playing?
Not anymore.
They used to, just Nebraska. Or they-
Ah-ha.
Well, they're in this conference they used to play.
Okay, sorry. So I'm going to flip through, I'm Don Flower, I'm with Johnson Controls, and I'm responsible for the energy performance contract savings that we did on the project. So for the past three years, I've been involved in reporting on what energy savings you actually got out of that project. So I'll go through the timeline here. So the contract was signed in June of 2015. Installation started July 2015, and then completed on March 2016. And then, then for me, I get involved with the performance period from April 1 through March. And we, what we had on this project, even though it was a 15-year financing period, we had one year of measurement verification to verify that all the, I'll say FIMs, but FIM just stands for Facility Improvement Measure. So you'll see that throughout the slide. So when we installed the FIMs, then the financing period was for 15 years, and I'll go through that in a second, too. But so we verified them in year one. I also did a look at the utilities. Now, it wasn't a utility bill guarantee, so the way that the contract was written is that we basically spot-measured the items that we installed, and I'll go through what those are as well. But we do that in year one, and then that savings is projected for future years. And the last bullet there basically just indicates that at the end of that first year, your guys' staff, I know it's Russ and Dave now, before it was Tim, they renewed for a year to get some additional year out of the reporting that I had been doing. So that's really what I'm here tonight to do, to show an update to that savings for the entire project to date. So this is just, gives a summary of the 15-year financing period. The big number at the bottom right basically just summarizes that it was basically about $2.4, $2.5 million project in savings that was coming along with this project. So, and then I'll show how we did in the slides that follow. So what we did in terms of the facility improvement measures, we did chiller, boiler, and rooftop replacements. We did lighting and controls upgrades. Then there was a tax savings where there was some, by looking at your guys' utility bills, we found that there was some taxes you guys were being charged that we ended up getting refunded for, you guys. I mean, you guys did a lot of the work on that, too, but had we not been looking, those might have gone unnoticed, and the utility might not have brought that up to let you guys know that you shouldn't have been paying those taxes. And then operation and maintenance, that's what the O&M is at the bottom. So those are basically, with the new equipment, meant that you have less operation and maintenance So this summarizes how the contract required us to verify the savings, and the next couple slides actually go into some details, but they're really, the next couple slides are for, kind of to show an example of what we did. But the installation period, since there's a period when the contract's signed and installation starts, you start getting, part of the lighting gets installed, and the chillers and boilers start, and you actually start to get some benefit out of those. So there is some savings that occurs during that time period, and so that's why there's a column for installation. And then you've got the year-one savings. It's a little bit bigger number because there was bigger or more O&M savings in that first year, and then the second year, that O&M savings drops off. And then you still have the utility avoidance and the savings that are going to come off your utility bill in that year. So the total project for this, based on how we verified the measures in year one for this period, is $381,000. And later on, I'll actually, what I like to show better is, I like to dive into that utility savings. And so to me, that's really the slide I want to get to tonight, because I think that's a, it's just really good news, so. All this is, it's kind of light there, but this just shows what we did. We take the data, we plug it into these graphs, and we find out if these chillers were below the KW per ton, we hope that they were. So that's what we did. The orange line is below those. I know that you can't see them all, but this is really just here, for example, to show what we did, and that this measure was making the savings. And some of these, the savings was not recalculated, so as if we, if the equipment was meeting at savings, we just left the savings at what we had guaranteed. The one that I did do, this is similar for the boiler and the RTUs. We just looked at what the efficiencies were once we had them installed. And then, let's see, so the lighting was actually done, but we come in, and we'll have our lighting subcontractor come in and actually put a meter on the lights that we installed to identify whether or not those fixtures are actually reduced to the wattage level that we expected them to be. And so by doing this, you can see at the bottom, when we measured that out and plugged it back into the calculations, it was $268 long. So it's just by taking those and projecting them through the model that we originally This is what I was talking about earlier, where there was tax savings. It was $26,000 worth of tax savings that were identified, that you guys worked with the utility to get recovered in that first year. So this is just a summary of what I did following that. So I go in there, and we actually take a look and do the spot measurements of all of those items that I just kind of summarized through, the chillers, boilers, RTUs, lighting and controls. And then what I did following that period is, worked with Dave Schultz and provided him reviews of the controls to show that the schedules for each semester, fall, summer, and winter, are actually not out of line with what they should be, so that buildings aren't being left on longer or into the evening if there weren't classes. And I don't really know if there should be classes or not, but I review it, and I highlight and give to Dave, and Dave can, uses that information to work with staff for his buildings to make sure that if something should be tightened up, then it is. And then the other thing was, I would look at set points, which do the same thing, so that if you had a night setback, is it really still in place so that it will work? Is somebody overriding it? And if those things are occurring, that's what's on that report, so that he can take a look at those things. I have some examples of those, and you're going to squint at a couple of them, but I just put them up there. For example, there's a lot of information that I look at and send to Dave, but- there's a lot of information that I look at and send to Dave, but it's terrible for this presentation, but it works if you're in front of a computer and can kind of dig into the weeds a little bit, so. And then that ended after a year following, and then, like I said, renewed. So we actually did just a controls review for that period, but working with Dave, we actually, I just feel like looking at the utility bills is, is I like to. And I, he and I talked and we decided to do it. So that, otherwise, contractually, we wouldn't have looked at utility bills, but because Dave and I talked, we just, we're kind of on the same page and decided to look. And, and we knew that we wanted to come to display that for you guys anyway, so. So this is just kind of restating what I said before. It's just teamwork, and it's, you know, it's, it's actually been a really good relationship working with these guys. This is, again, now you can start squinting, but this is the kind of reviews. I, I just highlight the points that, you know, are out of line. The, I wouldn't get hung up on trying to dissect this, but this is information that goes to Dave and his group, and he can use our control service guys when they come onsite to say, hey, I got this report from Don. Change these points, or can you, you know, do something with these? And if you guys don't do it yourself, our controls guys will do it for you while, while we're here. And just because I may not be doing this work anymore in the future, you can still use our controls guys to do this kind of, they won't necessarily do the reporting, but they can still check set points and schedules for any buildings that you want to look at. This is the really busy one, but these are the schedules that I look at and highlight any of the hours that are over what we had recommended in the contract. And then this is just identifying whether or not these boiler and chiller temperatures are what they were supposed to be. And if they're not, then they highlight and give them to Dave. So just because they're highlighted here doesn't mean that they're still that way. This is something that Dave and his group, you know, would look at and make sure that they're in line. Again, just more data on different strategies that we installed. More busy data, but this is a good example of just, you know, in the pink section, you identify that, well, that was a weekend. Looks like it didn't get turned off. Why is that? So I hand that to Dave, and he can at least, you know, check into it. It gives him something to investigate and find out, are you guys, you know, is there a reason? Is it just being an oversight, or does it need to be that way? So this is just, we have mechanical and control service through Johnson onsite here, so Russ manages that contract. I would be the ongoing energy monitoring piece of that, but as of this year, it's, it's over unless you guys want to renew that. And I'm always happy to, but I would only do it if you guys find value in doing it. So if you, there's no reason to take money out of your budget if nobody's going to look at it or you're doing it on your own. So, but anyway, I do it every day for a lot of projects, and I kind of, you know, nerdy when it comes to wanting to look at utility bills. So anyway, if you don't want to look at your utility bills and want us to, then you can get ahold of us, and I've got a good relationship with Dave and Russ, and so they can find me. This is kind of the, the money slide, but this is great for a couple of reasons. This is really, if you take nothing else away from my being here today, this is kind of a good summary. So what I would look at first is that second bar graph, kind of in the middle. The March through February period, I'll call that the baseline period, but that's what your bills were prior to doing this project. And then when you start looking at the orange, blue, and purple bars, that's what your bills were after the project. So the orange bar is the installation period. So your bills went down drastically, and, and the, the difference of those two are in the last bar graph to the right. So over those, over those three years, you saw, this is directly looking at your bill. This isn't a strapping on a meter and, and running a calculation or a model. This is actually what your bills did for that period of time. So, oh, since, since you guys signed the contract and I started looking at the bills in, in July, you've got $420,895 in savings off your bill. And, and the other way to look at that is, I heard you guys say that budgets aren't fun to deal with. You know, it's like trying to balance your checkbook when you don't have much money in there. But had you not done the project, there's a good chance your bill would still be, your utility bills would still be up in that green range, you know, with that 400 and some thousand, but they are not now. So, you know, some of it is the equipment that we installed, but some of it's just good behavior. It could be, I did look to see weather, and so I did notice that the only year that weather is hugely different is this last year compared to the previous year. So when you see that that purple bar is a little bit more of an expenditure in that 358, almost 359,000 over last year, the weather was about 20% say worse in, in the summer and winter months so far for what I have data for through July, just looking at June through July so far. So anyway, that's, with that, I'm kind of wrapping up, but I, I know that I was trying to go fast here, but I also don't want to shortchange any effort for questions. But we, since, unless this gets renewed, I won't be here again to get, to give these presentations. So we gave, we wanted to have Russ on behalf of his group come up and grab this reward. And so I didn't know if everyone would be able to see it, so it's a picture of what that is there. So we, we really appreciate being able to work on these projects. They're, they're expensive, and they're scary because it involves a lot of complex things that you guys just have to trust that everything's going to work the way that we said. So I think that there's a lot of good news in looking at your bills and the way that things work. So it really was a good relationship, and, and we appreciated being able to work on it with you guys. So, and then that's, that's all I got.
We get to show that off in the boardroom, don't we?
Yeah.
I have a question. When you did the, the original walkthrough and you were looking at light bulbs and things like that, did you do any of the thermal imaging on doors, on heat sensing and leakage of doors? Because we're concerned about facilities management and keeping that going, too.
I do not know the answer to that. When they did the original audit, I unfortunately wasn't actually involved in that. Actually, I came on right after that, and this is one of the first projects that I actually got once it was in construction. But I, I totally know what you're talking about. I've done it on other projects that we have. I'm just not sure if that was part of the investment-grade audit that was done when the engineers came and walked through. I can find that out if it was done or not. It wasn't put in the project, otherwise I would have seen it. It would have been one of the FIMs. So I know that it wasn't, and so that would be building envelope, is what we would call it as a FIM. But I'm not sure if they did any of the imaging on it. So that's, that's something that can be done in the future because you do still have a connection to Johnson Controls, and I'm guessing that our controls guys could get ahold of one of those cameras for you. If not, I can, I can put you guys in. I probably shouldn't say this, but any energy services company like ours would be happy to be involved with you in talking about this stuff. They'll often do that stuff as part of a preliminary audit for you if you had other needs in the building. So I'm, I'm not a sales guy, and I was probably about the worst sales presentation ever to plug the other competitors. But I think if all those guys do a good job, it bodes well for us as well. So I trust other ESCOs. Use us if you can, but, um, anyway, usually those guys will do it. But I, I can check. I'm not sure if we did it or not.
Thank you.
I have a question. To use the turnover ride, is there a central control system for the, for, center for the whole system?
Yeah, you guys have a server, and it's a, it's our system, so it's called a Metasys system. And I can look at it remotely. I'm pretty sure that Dave and Russ can as well. And they can get in there, and that's how I look at it. I can see every point that's in there. I can see what the settings are, and your guys can as well. So, and it's all centralized in one, one computer, so that they can see it and, and check that out. And I know that I've worked with Dave before, when he called me and said, hey, how do I look at this, or how do I get into something? So I've helped him, but then also, that's another good use of the controls guys, since you do have a Johnson Control Service contract, you can ask them anything that you don't know. They'll, they'll sit with you. They have a certain number of hours in their contract, and they're here to do certain things on the system anyway. But if you're ever here and have questions, I know it won't be you asking the question, but that's what Dave and Russ would come in and do and sit with them. But they do that at a central location.
That's located over at maintenance, in our office. We have a Johnson Control System right there, and it's right below where the main server is, so it's all interconnected. So we're plus with Skyler and all the IT, we keep that up and going. So.
Thank you, Mr. Flower. I appreciate it. Just as Florence Jean can reiterate or jump in, but I, as one of the trustees that was here when we approved this process, and maybe Sandy can throw out the number, because I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but, you know, it was a scary project to initiate, and the initial dollars outlay were, because we were buying a lot of new equipment in this timeline, too, because we had a lot of dated equipment that was well past its service life, or was getting darn close. The projected return on the investment in this, I mean, it was well under that 15-year mark, and it was, I mean, and I think we're already, and we're well ahead of that even, too. Sandy, can you remember those numbers, or?
I don't.
That's okay. I, I don't want to throw out and be wrong, but it was, I mean, these, this is good. This is great. This is what it does, or what it's expected to do and what was being told to us. And I, and we, great example of good, good fiscal responsibility. Some upfront money, saving us money in the long term, and updating our system so that we don't have all new, we're not buying new chillers and boilers, four of them a year in a bad time of the year. And updating things before they were broken and totally outdated, too, which I, I remember the summer when they came in and were putting those in over the summer months when the students were gone, and trying to get those things fixed and corrected before you got a dorm full of students with no heat in the middle of the winter. So, moving on to our action items. Action item A, Michelle Haley, our Director of Nursing, if she would like to come up.
She, she is not here, trustee Presley. Michelle had to make a unplanned trip to Arkansas. Her father had an emergency heart surgery, but he is doing very, very, very well. So she is absent this evening. And then I was actually going to defer to Mr. Curbs, because he's done the reviews, but he's absent this evening as well. So with that, though, I do know there were a handful of things that were identified, that Mr. Curb had proposed to be either changes related to dates or a couple of things related to language. Those changes have been made. He has approved the final draft, and so we are seeking approval of the nursing handbook this evening.
And with that, I move acceptance.
Second, trustee Milan seconds. Any discussion on the Department of Nurse Education Student Handbook?
This is very extensive. It requires a lot of intense work to put together.
I appreciate the high standards they hold the nurses to.
Absolutely.
And I think it's, it's showing that a lot.
Yeah, the quality of student and the other academic success that they're having.
And no further discussion. All in favor of approving the student handbook, say aye.
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 Very good. Thank you. All opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Moving on to action item B. Administrative appointment for the Treasurer of the Board. Dr. Nolte, would you like to present this, or do you want me to, sir?
You go ahead.
Okay. So the Treasurer of the Board position must be filled because we have to have a Treasurer of the Board. And the staff recommendation is the Board of Trustees respectfully request to approve the appointment of Dr. Nolte, the current president, as the Treasurer for the Board until that position is filled through that process.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Korblech?
Second.
Second by trustee Hershberger. Any discussion?
Do, I have a question. Do you feel comfortable with this?
I did it in my last institution. Last two institutions.
Who has been the Treasurer?
Beta.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Trustee Hershberger, I'm sorry.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Moving on to action item C.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for doing this.
We better have a good report.
So action item C. Russ, if you'd like to come up, sir, present this as in regards to the easement contract for United Telecom.
At the July 24th meeting, the Board had asked that some of the language in this be changed, you know, kind of more in our favor. And Glenn Curbs got together with the United Telecom people, and they worked that out. They sent, he sent them what he wanted to see in it. They looked at it, they liked it. So they changed the contract to, to meet what Mr. Curbs wanted. And so you have that now before you, I believe. But I know we have copies that need to be signed if approved. And if there are any questions, I will attempt to answer them. Probably Glenn is going to have the actual answers, but like I said, they went together on it. He provided the language, they inserted the language. It should meet our specifications.
Agree. I'm reading this, and hopefully everybody had a chance to review, but if not, I, one of the big requests was, is to be sure that we had the ability, that if we ever wanted to utilize that ground in the future, that the, the United would pay to move that themselves, and that we wouldn't bear any of that responsibility to move, to move that fiber optic line that was placed. And so, and it is in the contract, it is towards the end there. I won't labor and read it for everybody, you all can. So I know that was our big concern that stood out last time.
And Mr. Chairman, I might comment that today in a discussion with foundation folks, they were also concerned that they had been named also in this need to approve the easement. And they had some questions about why, that because we still own the land, but they eventually will own the building. And the Board will need to approve it there, too.
I know, I, I can speak to part of that.
Okay.
The, the gentleman from United told us that when they investigated with the Registrar of Deeds, that they showed a section of that right-of-way to have been owned by the foundation. And so that's why they wanted to cover all the bases, and they produced a contract for us and a contract for the foundation. I'm not sure if the Foundation Board has to sign it, or if this Board can sign it. Or, but, I mean, and that's the extent of my knowledge. It's not very vast. But it was based on, on ownership showed at the county.
Chris?
I went to the survey office today and did verify that with Ben in the survey office, that there is a small, tiny section from the west side of the dome to the street. And it's very tiny, but that is why they want the foundation. He did recommend signing in for the Foundation Board. He said it's not going to hurt anything. I spoke with our executive council today, and we also decided that whatever the trustees will vote on, we will follow suit. I mean, there's really no other reason not to, but I have not heard back from legal counsel on whether this is our responsibility or not, but it was the opinion of the, of Ben in the survey office at Ford County that it is okay for the foundation to, to vote on something like this. It is in their records.
Any further questions for Russ on this? Any motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Trustee Hershberger moves.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Ramser. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. And then moving into, we don't have any other unfinished business for the evening. We're other new business, and moving into the consent agenda. Trustee Reichenborn asked for some questions on item. Trustee Reichenborn asked for some questions on item, business services items six, seven, eight, and nine, if we'd like to discuss those, and then, Mr. Reichenborn, if you're so moved, we can add them back into consent agenda for approval.
Well, and those we had bids for the maintenance agreement for the rest of its halls and student union campus and so on, but, and then we have a Schedule B. Is Schedule B how they figured their bid? Do we know? Or is Schedule B in addition to what we're paying them to, to service fees?
We have a, we've had an agreement with this company for several years, and to non-renew this, we would have to send them a letter, I believe, 30 days before the end of the contract, so I would have had to send a letter on July the first or second. I was not aware of that stipulation. The amounts that you see is the amounts that we pay on those contracts. There's no extra unless there's something outside of the contract that comes up. Now with that said, and the research that I had completed, I think I can save us some money with next year's contract, because I believe that we can consolidate three different, maybe four different vendors into one, and it will cost us less than just these contracts.
So I was just wondering on, you know, we have a contract, we're going to pay an amount for that contract, but the Schedule B, is that, if they come down, is that in addition to the contract, or is this, Schedule B, is that part of the contract?
The contract is their inspection, and they're checking all of the systems on a quarterly basis. If we call them out for anything other than that, and I would have to look at it a little more closely, but we do get invoices from them if we call them out in non-scheduled times. We had an issue with the LRC, we're not sure what happened. We may have tripped something during our little remodeling project up there, and every zone in the building was in, had an alarm on it, and so we asked them to come out and check that, and they checked that and reset it, but I never saw a, an invoice on that.
But that's when we might go to Schedule B, for those services that we have to call them out.
Yes, and usually on Schedule B, we're going to be looking at equipment issues, if they have to replace equipment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? And trustee Reichenborn, are you okay if we add those then back to the consent agenda?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second by trustee Malone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I'm sorry, I cut you two off. Maya, Gary.
Aye, aye on first.
Thank you. Okay, and we have no executive session, and that concludes our meeting for the night, and I move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourn the meetings, including those on the phone?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you guys for being here.
When I grow up, I want to save lives, like a superhero, and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.